Well, I'm here. How are you? Well, I should tell you it's a little early. Because we'll be up here.
Really?
Yep.
Yeah, sorry.
Can I get you a seat? Yep.
I'll just stand here and help.
Okay. Very good. I don't know. I'm glad you're back. Another one is sorry.
Good to see you. You okay?
Yeah, how's your arm?
Where is the sun?
Dr. Chaney, the sun and she's back here.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Oh, yes, I just came to speak out.
We're going to move this thing into the circle, sir.
Dr. Chaney, we're checking.
I posted the signs in prayer. They all read. They can see that already.
Okay.
I also posted the sign by the quiet. I think our fuckers run, bro.
All right. Your batteries dead. My batteries dead.
Can I have everyone's attention, please? We're getting ready to start our city council meeting for today. We have Dr. Andrew Chaney here, who will lead us in prayer. Let us stand for prayer, and then we'll do the plea.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, residents and guests, let us now approach the throne of grace and our salvation in prayer. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we come before you tonight praying for your blessing upon this city council. For your blessing upon the city of Greenwood. For your blessing upon everyone living in our community. We acknowledge, oh Lord, that you are sovereign over all authority and that every good gift, especially the gift of leadership, comes from your hand. Lord, bless our mayor. Bless our council members. Bless all of our town workers. Tonight, we pray that your spirit would descend gently upon this council meeting. By the power of your Holy Spirit, we pray for wisdom in the minds of these leaders. We pray for peace to fall upon their hearts. And in this Mississippi heat, we pray for them to feel the coolness of your love. That your love would fall upon them like the cool dew in the morning. Quiet, steady, full of grace. Still the anxious hearts soften the hardened ones. Let not anger take root, but let love abound. May every voice that speaks tonight be guided not by pride or fear, but by humility and truth. May this council remember the sacred duty of public service. To serve neighbors, to steward justice, to seek the common good. Give courage to speak truthfully and enable ears to listen attentively. Let kindness season every word. And when disagreement comes, as it may, may it be handled with dignity and respect. Should tempers flare, remind them of your gentleness. Should distrust arise, remind them that reconciliation is the heart of the gospel. We pray all this in the name of Jesus Christ, the Prince of Peace. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good afternoon. May I have everybody's attention? We're getting ready. We're gonna start our meeting. First, we have to adopt the agenda. To my knowledge, the agenda will go as printed. Any questions? If not, the chair intends a motion to adopt the working agenda today.
So move.
Second, President. All right, motion been made and been moved. Any further? All in favor, right hand, please. Pose the same sign and motion carried. Okay, next on the agenda, we get to hear from our mayor. How you doing, Mayor?
How's it going?
Okay.
Greetings to the council, greetings to the congregation chamber. First thing I want to talk about is grants opportunity with Main Street Greenwood. We, I presented a level of support for two grants. The first grant is the Public Art and Community Grant Opportunity. The Mississippi Arts Commission, their partnership with Levitt Foundation has announced an exciting new grant opportunity aimed for transforming public spaces through art and live music. Secondly, the T-Mobile Hometown Grant Opportunity. I did a level of support. The T-Mobile is offering grants up to fifty thousand to small towns through an hometown grants program. These funds support shovel-ready programs that improve community spaces, such as parks enhancements, public art, downtown revitalizations, and technology upgrades. These two grants will be open point on the... One is the renovation of Willington Park, if approved. And the other one is the Emmett Till statue. It was presented or created by Thomas Gregory. I guess you do a mural as well as a fourteen pillar or oak. I'm not sure the logistics of it completely. So those are where the grants will be focused, will be focused on. Secondly, is the development of a director of park recreation ground. I have permitted, I have submitted you a copy of the job descriptions. The development of the director of parking recreation will be vital to the city by providing additional funds and safe activities and spaces for youth and adults while overseeing upkeep of grounds throughout each ward. This position will have a fifty thousand dollar annual salary. With the reconsolidation of the Public Works and Recycling Department provides the necessary funds in the budget to cover the position. A job description has been submitted to your review. Number three is the Greenwood floor hospital board members. LaFlore County Supervisors provide two qualified members for the vacancy on the Greenwood Board Hospital Board. The names have been submitted to you to look, to consider for the vacancy. Number four is a ninety day plan. Each department is working on a ninety day plan on what they wish to accomplish over the next ninety days. That will be available for you by the next board meeting. New hires. Police, they just re, they hired three, three new hires, two patrols, one detective. Fire department, three new hires, twelve firemen ready for academy. Public Works, now three hires, one C D L driver, two labors. Who seeks additional street lighting across the city of Greenwood. In collaboration with Greenwood Utility, additional street lighting is being installed and ported lit there. Greenwood Police Department have assisted with identifying the areas where lighting is needed the most. Number seven is the proclamation of a state of a local emergency implementation of juvenile care few, ban of ski masks in public and operating restrictions on late night establishment. A proclamation has been submitted to you for the approval due to the crime that has been committed in our community. A meeting of demand between the council, meanwhile, the Sheriff Department and Police Department was discussed. And a plan of action on how each party can work together to curtail some of the issues in our community. The handout given gives you a full description of the plan of action that is being requested to be implemented. Additional opportunities are being researched. The idea of using technology in the form of drones, dump fire detectors, and lights and plate free have been mentioned. That is the mayor's report.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, for that report. Any questions for the mayor before we move further? Thank you, Mayor. Next on the agenda, we have the public agenda. First, we have Ms. Brannis Brown Williams. Is she here today? Okay, I did get a note, Mr. Daniels. Cameron Daniels would not be here. So I did see Mr. Thomas Gregory. He's next.
Good afternoon. Tried to figure out the technology to be able to show this presentation to y'all on the screen, but it would not work at all. All right. So, good afternoon, Mayor, council members. I'm here today to talk to you about an opportunity that we, as a community, have to apply for grant funds from the Mississippi Development Authority for site development at the Greenwood LaFlore Industrial Park. I was down on the coast this past week at the Mississippi Economic Development Council when the announcement was made for this opportunity. And I immediately sprung into action. I called the mayor, I called the county administrator to try to set up the timeline for us to achieve the deadline, which I'll share with y'all in a second. Greenwood and LaFlore County are very blessed in that we have a great industrial park. We have over fourteen hundred acres of publicly owned land in the industrial park that has several strategic advantages. And you can see I've listed some here. We've got not just a lot of land, but we have access to mainline railroad through C N. We've got short line rail access to the port at Greenville. We have four lane connectivity to Interstate fifty-five. And we have a lot of great utility partners. Greenwood Utilities, Atmos Energy, Entergy, and the city of Greenwood. The issue is that all of our available land is currently being used for agricultural purposes. And it is not what the buzzword is right now is site ready. So when an industry has come into a community to locate a prospective industry, they want to know how fast they can get their door open if they choose that community. And that is one thing that we have as an opportunity, is to improve site readiness and what the industry calls speed to market. If you'll turn the page, you can see the, at the top of the page, the red outline outlines all of the land that's available out there. And if you, if you talk to industrial site selectors, this term "site readiness" comes up over and over. Again, because time is money. When these industrial prospects are looking for communities, they are almost always going to choose a community that can get them through the procedural hurdles and open for business the fastest. And so those communities who are investing in their sites are those that get selected. So what is site readiness? Site readiness includes things like due diligence activities, which is just a fancy word for knowing about your sites. Whenever we respond to a request for information from a prospective industry, they will often ask, "Do you have a Phase One and a Phase Two environmental assessment done? Do you have a wetland delineation report? Have you done a cultural resources assessment? Have you looked at threatened and endangered species?" These are all sort of engineering-type reports that have to be done before a prospect can come in and do anything on a site. When we respond to those, we check, "No, no, 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 no. We haven't done any of those things." You know, once you understand what you have and what, what things need to be mitigated, then you can do infrastructure upgrades, like environmental cleanup, if that's necessary. If there are wetlands on the site, you can do mitigation activities. Improvements to utilities, transportation improvements, and other things that get the site more ready for prospective industry. Flip the page, and you'll see a series at the top of the page announcements that our neighbor up in Grenada has made over the past three or four years. Y'all probably all familiar with the Milwaukee Tooling Act, but there's been several others in recent months. Modine, their largest industry, has expanded to add four hundred and fifty new jobs. A couple of months ago, they announced a partnership where developers coming in to build spec buildings in their industrial park. They launched their first biofuel energy project back in 2023. Grenada's got a lot of attention lately in this space, and I get questions all the time. I'm sure you have too. You know, "What's going on in Grenada? Why can't these industries come to Greenwood?" Well, if you look at the second slide at the bottom of the next page, you can see that they have been working quietly behind the scenes over the past five to seven years, investing in their sites through site readiness activities to get to where they have become more attractive to prospective industry. So, starting back in 2019, they started to apply for and receive grants for their industrial park. Fifty thousand dollars here, five hundred thousand dollars there. And then they got a multimillion dollar grant from M D A to really invest in their industrial park. And so the reason why industries are choosing communities like Grenada and Batesville over communities like ours is because their sites have been invested in. All the utilities are run, the dirt work's been done. They've done all of these engineering studies. They're, they're ready for industry. We have some catching up to do. And so the opportunity that we have, if you flip the page again, is M D A's Site Development Grant. This is a grant program that the state makes available to communities for just that, for investment in your industrial sites. They will match dollar for dollar up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to allow communities to take on the necessary work that gets our industrial sites ready for business. You can see at the bottom of the slide, just a summary. We would fall into what is considered the premier site category because we've got sites that are over a hundred acre parcels. We can apply for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It does require a local match. And that deadline is Friday, February, August the fifteenth. So it's a month from today, which is why the, the need for me to come and go ahead and get before you and start to talk about this. I'm not asking for a commitment today, but I will be coming back August the fifth to, to, you know, have y'all commit local match. What I'm asking, and I'm glad we have county members in the audience today, and I've spoken with the mayor, spoken with the council president, I've spoken with Ms. Stansel. I'm asking the city of Greenwood and LaFlore County to each contribute one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to go towards that local match. So if the county contributes and the city contributes, we'll have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars between the two. Then we can apply for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the state, and we'll have a five hundred thousand dollar site investment project. And that will hopefully, I've reached out to our colleagues at Willis Engineering to sort of put together a scope of work and a budget. But it's my understanding that that amount of money would take care of all of the site due diligence activities on all fourteen hundred acres of publicly owned land in the industrial park. And that is land that the city and the county own jointly together. It's not the economic development foundation's land. It belongs to the city and the county. When an industry comes to town and the land is sold, that money comes back to the city and the county. And of course, the economic benefits return to the city through increased jobs and wages, property taxes, et cetera. Flipping the page one more time. You know, in terms of getting our sites ready for economic development projects, Phase One is already underway. Sort of clearly, we're just now getting started on the development of a master plan for our industrial park. We received a site development grant from M D A last year, a smaller amount, which we are gonna be using soon to begin this master planning work to help us understand big picture, what sites are priorities, what types of industries are suitable to our location, based on our land availability, based on our infrastructure, based on our workforce. That's Phase One, and we're working on that. Phase Two is what I'm really here to talk to you about today. And that would be taking on the due diligence activities. We are looking at those four things. You can see there, cultural resources surveys, threatened and endangered species assessments, wetland delineations, and geotechnical surveys, which is essentially where they go in and bore into the soil, do soil testing to see what's down there, what types of soils can withstand, in terms of development. And so, again, last, last flip at the top of the page, this is the timeline. And it's compressed admittedly. So you can see, we're, today, I'm presenting to the city council as we speak. The week of July twenty-eighth, it is my hope to have a similar meeting with the folks in the county. And we'll be coming before the board supervisors on August the fourth to ask them to make their commitment of their portion of the local match. And then I'll be here the next day, on Tuesday, August the fifteenth, with a resolution, if that is the council's decision. So, again, it is, you know, it's my professional opinion that in order for Greenwood and LaFlore County to compete in the industrial recruitment space that we have work to do in our, in our industrial park. The communities that have done this work are those that are getting chosen. It's, it's really the city and the counties', you know, choice whether we want to try to compete in this space. And if so, we're gonna, we're gonna have to band together and work together to invest in our industrial park. So, you know, I think this is important work. And that was, you know, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It's a lot of money. But in the scheme of things, it's an investment in our community's future and in our economic development prospects. So happy to answer any questions that you may have about any of this.
President.
Yes, sir.
I have one question, but do you see that we're site ready? And we're talking about the one hundred and twenty-five from the city, one hundred and twenty-five from the county, total in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What would we do in detail with that five hundred thousand dollars to get site ready?
So, these engineering studies that I've mentioned, the cultural resources assessment, the wetland delineations, the threatened and endangered species assessments, and the geotechnical surveys are expensive. So, and fourteen hundred acres is a lot of land. So, it, it will take care of all of, of that, that work. It's, you know, threatened and endangered species, they have to make sure that you're not going to disturb the native habitat of an endangered frog. I mean, you know, it's that kind of stuff. But that is the type of assurance that prospective industry needs to have before they are willing to commit to come in to a community. And that's the type of work that if they choose it and that's not been done, they're gonna have to jump through that hoop themselves. And so the more that the community can do in advance to have all of those reports completed, the better off we will be in terms of being attractive to prospective industry. There's also, we have two sites in our industrial park that are served by Entergy, big utility company. They have two sites that are served by rail, which is very attractive to industry. They have a certified sites program that you can go through. And if you become an Entergy certified site, then they do a lot of marketing for your property. And they're out there trying to recruit industry to come to your town, too. In order to be Entergy certified... In order to be Entergy certified, you have to have all of this done, and then a whole bunch of other stuff. But yeah, it's, I, you know, I'm still sort of, I feel like getting settled into this role and still learning a lot about what, what it takes to recruit industry to a community, and this due diligence work is a big part of it. And it's not the end of it. And so, you know, we're, we're talking about doing this as a phase two. Once we do all of this work, we're gonna learn a lot about our sites. We're gonna learn where the wetlands are, and then we'll come back more than likely and, and take on a phase three scope of work where we're mitigating wetlands activities. If there's any environmental contamination, we'll clean it up. If there's any dirt work that needs to be done, based on the results of the soil surveys, we'll then start to do infrastructure upgrades so that year after year, we are steadily making our industrial park more attractive to prospective industry. Remember the Grenada example? They were working on their sites for five years before they started to reap the benefits of that work. And so that's about how many years we're, you know, behind some of our competitors. And so we can, we can start playing catch-up this year if that's the will of the city council and the board of city supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Let me ask you my question, Thomas. We just committed to this 125,000 right now. We're not, is not due, is it due by August 15th?
So the application, the grant application is due August the 15th. I'm not asking for a commitment today. I will be asking for your decision on a commitment on August the 5th.
And that's my question, the commitment is, is we would have to give you a $125,000 check then?
No. The commitment would be to put it in your budget for the next fiscal year.
That's what, okay, now you, I'm satisfied with that.
Yeah, because the, once you submit the grant application, it's gonna take them probably 60 days to review the applications, and by the time they let you know.
There's still no guarantee we gonna get it.
No guarantee that we'll get it. But if you commit it, commit to put it in your budget for next year, if we do get it, then, then we'll, we'll come after the funding. But it's not, because I understand where the budget year is winding up, and y'all are, you know, beginning conversations about next year's budget. So this is essentially a good faith commitment to put it in the budget for the next fiscal year, should we be awarded.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it, man.
Okay, number four, policy issue agenda, we don't have anything. Number five, our routine items agenda, under that is our consent agenda. Any question under the consent of just the council so we can take that one in a block?
President.
Yes, sir.
I have one, one question on Dr. Kline here. On this Kendrick Cox, Mayor Cox here, this $900, what, what was that for?
It's my bond.
Your bond, could you buy that South Blue down there?
I wasn't told about South Blue. When I called next about the bond, they told me I had to have a, a $10,000 bond. $100,000, sorry, $100,000 bond, and they told me I needed for taking off. I wasn't told about South Blue.
You didn't tell us about it?
No.
Because we all did out on South Blue, and I just was curious about, so I was curious about what this $900 for. So you got it, your bond was a different company in this?
Yes.
Okay, you get your bond.
Stay far.
Stay far. So you paid that your own pocket in?
Correct.
You need to be a first back on that. All right, no question, President.
Okay.
Want to see what's for first?
All right.
There are no further questions, I move that we take this in a block.
Council move.
Second.
You get that Vicky, who motioned and who seconded?
My motion.
Is she seconding?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, been motioned and been seconded, that we do this on a block? Any further? All in favor, right hand? Pose the same sign, motion carry. On our routine items agenda, council, I'm going to ask, there's a lot of personal questions that we need to discuss, and because of the Privacy Act, I think we should go into the executive session. So I'm going to ask the council to vote to go into executive session to discuss some of these appointees. Any objection?
Is that your motion? Did you make a motion, or your recommendation?
My, yeah, my recommendation that we entertain.
It would be for.
Personnel, personnel.
Personnel.
Right.
We, we need to go into a closed, a motion to go into a closed determination.
Okay.
And a second for that, and that would close the meeting and then vote on the actual.
Yeah, well, that's my motion to go into a closed determination, so we're closing this meeting. Can I chair entertain a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
For personnel.
For personnel, any further?
President, just containing this, this one, Mr.?
Yes. All in favor, right hand? Pose the same sign. Vote was there. Count pick.
Four points.
Four points, okay. All righty, go is read, routine items agenda, and first, reappointing Vicki Lattis clerk of the council.
I make that motion.
Second.
All right, motion been made and been seconded, any further? All in favor, right hand, please? Pose the same sign, motion carry. Mr. Palmer, can you excuse yourself? Next one, a motion reappointing Carlos Palmer as municipal judge for the seat of Greenwood.
I saw a little president, second.
Motion been made and been seconded, all in favor, right hand, please? Pose the same sign, motion carry. Number three, a resolution appointing Angela Kimbrough as public defender for the seat of Greenwood.
I saw a move.
I second it.
Motion been made and properly seconded, any further? All in favor, right hand, please? Oh, yeah, Mr. Palmer.
We are running him.
Okay, I forgot I was out. Yeah, I forgot you was out, Mr. Palmer. All righty. Motion been made and seconded on Ms. Kimbrough?
Palmer didn't get a chance to vote, President. He had to recall the roll again, he was out. Did you vote on him, Mr. Palmer?
No, I didn't vote.
He did.
I was out. Which one was that, on number three?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, all in favor, right hand? Pose the same sign. Okay, what was that, five to two? Okay. I think Ms. Kimbrough is here.
Yes, sir, I am.
Oh, hey, Ms. Kimbrough.
How are you?
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, officer.
Okay. Okay, a resolution appointing Shanteria Flowers as chief administrative office for the seat of Greenwood.
I saw a move.
Chair entertain a second.
Y'all not gonna second it?
Okay, motion has died. All right, resolution appointing Marguerite Meeks as city attorney for the seat of Greenwood.
I saw a move.
Chair entertain a second.
Second.
All right, motion been made and been seconded, all in favor, right hand, please? Oppose the same sign. Okay, four, three?
Four, three.
Four, three, okay. All right, a resolution reappointing Charles Swayze III as prosecutor attorney for the seat of Greenwood.
I saw a move.
I second, President.
Motion been made and been seconded, all in favor, right hand, please? Pose the same sign, motion carry. Okay, a ro, a resolution approving the reappointment of Valerie Dorsey as special prosecutor for housing and other code violations.
I saw a move.
I second, President.
All right, motion been made and been seconded, all in favor, right hand? Pose the same sign, motion carry. Number eight, a resolution appointing Darwin Green as acting public work director for the seat of Greenwood.
I saw a move.
Second.
Motion been made and been seconded, any further? All in favor, right hand? Pose the same sign. Motion fail, four to three, okay? A resolution appointing Martellus McDowell as acting fire chief for the seat of Greenwood.
I saw a move.
Second.
Motion been made and been seconded, any further? All in favor, right hand, please? A potion, same. Same sign, I'm sorry. Sorry for focus, cut that off. All right, motion fail, four to three, Vicki?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, resolution appointing Demetrius Bedell as acting chief for the seat of Greenwood.
I saw a move.
Motion fail, not a second. A resolution appointing Donald Brock Jr. as city attorney pro team for the seat of Greenwood.
I saw a little president.
Second it.
Motion been made and been seconded, any further? All in favor, right hand? Pose the same sign, motion carry. A resolution authorizes Mayor Kendra Cox to be added as an authorized signer on all city bank accounts.
I saw a move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any further? All in favor, right hand, please? Pose the same sign, motion carry. A resolution, and I don't know how we gonna do this, we got two people on here.
That's what I was concerned about.
I don't understand how we do this.
And we only have one, one vacancy?
One vacancy.
And in the past, haven't we been selecting a person living in the city? Or does it matter?
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Because this is a counter appointment too.
Okay, so that's the appointment that we both have to agree on?
Yeah, that's one we both have to agree on.
Yeah.
Yeah, we both have to agree on. Uh, being, my, I would suggest, and the council tell me what you want to do, being that we just knowing about this on this resolution today, if y'all want to table it and, and choose between one of them, after we table it, since it's two on here?
I think that's a good suggestion.
That's a good suggestion.
For as I'm concerned.
I second that.
Okay, that we table, all right. Thirteen, we're going to table, all in favor? Okay. Opposes? Okay, okay. Number fourteen, we're going to table, all in favor? Well, I just entertained a motion, did we do a motion?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, all right, all in favor, right hand? Pose the same sign. Number sixteen, a resolution of the city, of the city council.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, right. A resolution of the city council of the city of Greenwood, Mississippi, authorizing the appointment of Antoine Williams as the acting director of Parks, Recreation and Grounds.
I saw a move.
You just seconded.
This is out of order.
Yeah, that's out of order.
Need piece in the, in the, in the, President.
Yeah, all right. Who, is Mr. Cook here? Do we have security here today?
Yes, sir.
Well, captains, we got two captains, I see. We're gonna ask, can y'all help us with some order, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you hear anybody else out of line, I'm gonna ask that to be removed.
I second, President.
Okay. All right, sixteen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Greenwood, Mississippi, authorizing the appointment of Linda Osborne as acting city clerk.
My president, my question, President.
Yes, sir.
That should be a real appointment or what? Apparently you got acting, what, what does that mean? I'm lost on that one. Maybe, uh, Mayor Cox has got some wrong. Are she being a real pointer, or she being appointed, or she acting? What was she doing?
She's in, she's in the air basically, where there are certain things I need to research. It will be open for interview, basically.
So how long is she gonna be acting?
By state statute, it says that I might have up to three, three months to appoint a, appoint a person.
President.
All right.
Okay, the law states that intern only can do ninety days, ninety days is over.
How's your ninety days?
I should have brought the law with me.
Three months is ninety days.
No, 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 it's the same ninety days.
Right, section 21, 1541 talks about the ninety days.
He said ninety days are over. Under the new administration, how is it?
It's, it's only effective 2024, that's the new law. Ninety days for intern.
Under the new administration, you have ninety days to.
Yeah, ninety days.
Right, so how, so what?
After ninety days, it's terminated automatically. According to the law.
You're not saying it's over now, you're saying after ninety days.
After ninety days.
I think y'all have agreement on.
Yeah, that's basic agreement, three months, I get the same thing. Yeah, three months, same thing.
But in the, in the event that the mayor decided to reappoint her, I mean, it wouldn't be over with it?
No, he could reappoint her if he, if he decided to do it.
Right, right.
If he decided to do that.
If he decided to do it.
Yeah, in that ninety days.
Yeah.
Let me ask a question, President. Mayor Cox, have that job been posted already then?
Um, I think so, yes, sir.
Has y'all been posted?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So that, so that means you're already planning to get rid of them?
No, that doesn't mean that, it's gonna be, it's gonna be in the face, that's all he said.
Well, okay, that, that's pretty much it, thanks for that poor owner with her job posted.
Yes, sir, Ms. Jen.
Isn't this kind of a critical time, all budgeting going on, and all the information has to be compiled by somebody that knows where it is, where it needs to be, how it needs to be prepared? It, it's pretty, you know, it's. I just, you know, I just know, we've seen a couple elected positions in LaFlore County get elected, and they just ran it in the ground. And we don't be held responsible for running some of our departments in the ground by experiments at critical times. And budgeting is a big thing. Everybody can see the size of that budget, it's about that thick. It's all department heads put stuff in that thing that's information, and it has to be submitted to us and everything else. And if that thing is, is not right, I, you know, but this, I don't know if this person has an accounting degree or a master's, and, uh, I, I just don't know, you know, I just.
I, you're right, you're right, but there's certain concerns right now that need to be addressed. We're in constant conversation with great teams, there are certain signs that need to be addressed, things that doesn't sit right with me, so the initial research and thinking.
This, this coach?
We've lost a lot of valuable knowledge in the last three weeks. It could have helped with getting budget done correctly. And then several. We can go, we can move on. A lot of years, years of knowledge that have been just eliminated. That you're, that we're gonna suppose that for.
Have a question.
Yes.
Okay, who do we eliminate? Because at this meeting per se, there nothing happened for us at all, which is appointed. Nothing happened at all, and I don't like it, period. Because when somebody else is in this administration, y'all voted for these people. But now you have, you all have issues now, and it makes no sense to have this issue because we have a black mayor in here, and y'all have some issues.
All right, remember to have y'all's attention, please.
It has something to do with it, yes, it has something to do with it.
All right, we're gonna move on and, uh.
Move on, President.
We're gonna move on.
You can move on, you need to move on.
All right, chair entertain a motion?
I saw a little president, that's one. There's no law score.
Exacting.
I second it.
All right, motion been made and been seconded, any further? All in favor, right hand, please? Pose the same sign, motion carry.
President, what, what was it, what was your count, President?
Excellent.
You get a count, I mean, I mean, Vicki?
What was, what was it, what was, what was it done anyway? Because I lost, what was it?
The vote on Linda.
Of the vote on Linda? Okay, yeah, I voted on, yeah, yeah, the acting.
It was passed. Five, six, four, five. Everybody vote.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Uh, seventeen, a resolution authorizing the development of a job description for the position of Parks, Recreation and Grounds for the seat of Greenwood. Chair entertain a motion?
I saw a move.
Chair entertain a second? Motion has died.